Thank you, sir. Welcome, everybody. Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Dearborn Public Schools. This is a Zoom meeting. Today is October 26. We were supposed to start at 5:30, but like everybody else, we're having technology issues. It is 5:52, and I will call this meeting to order. Madam Secretary, can we have a roll call, please?
Mary Lane is here in Dearborn, Michigan, objecting to the fact that I have to identify where I am. I don't think it matters, but it's a new law, apparently. Roxanne McDonald here from Dearborn as well. Michael Mead.
Here, Dearborn, Michigan.
Adal Mosib.
Here.
Mary Petchlikoff.
Here, in person.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Barry.
Here. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Before we started going to discussion, why are we here tonight? I know in the beginning of the school year, we had long discussions with the plans are for either online education or in-person, and we kept on checking what's going on in the community, checking the positivity rates in the community, and we were moving very, very slowly to get into in-person instruction. Two weeks ago, we met. It was a regularly scheduled meeting, and I can tell you all seven board members were ready to have a good discussion and maybe start phasing in some of our students. But at the end of the meeting, I'll just keep it as that we weren't comfortable enough moving forward, start bringing our students in. So we decided to schedule this study session. Tonight, we want to talk about our evaluation system. We want to talk about cleaning the classrooms, cleaning the buildings. What does that mean? And obviously, just as important as student safety, staff safety. So I just want to say something. Last meeting, I was quoted on social media, and I think it made one of the papers, as saying that I came in here thinking one thing, and listening to the comments, people changed my mind. No, it wasn't just the comments from the parents. We all sat here and listened to the presentation and listened to our... We're here. We're here. We're your voice. We're the, you know, our constituents' voices. So, yeah, we have to listen, obviously. So we're here tonight. Some, four of us are here in person, and three are online through Zoom. Do not, please do not assume things just because one of my colleagues is not in here. I'm thankful that if everybody showed up here, I don't know how we would run the meeting. So I am thankful to my colleagues, the one that volunteered to stay at home. Some of us, you know, show up in person, but I've also heard some lot of negative things about so-and-so is not in person. But, yeah, please do not assume anything. So we're here. We're here tonight to listen to the administration, listen to their plans and recommendations, and then we'll go ahead and listen to our citizen participation. I welcome, I welcome citizen participation. We all do. And we'll have a discussion and see if we're going to do anything. We'll go from there. Trustee Petrikov, you have something to add?
Yeah, I wanted to add to that. I read a lot of commentary about how long the last meeting was and the decision that we came to and why did we waste people's time and they watched it till midnight kind of thing. And I want to clarify something to the community members. We don't make decisions behind closed doors. We have to be in public. We have to have these conversations in public. We're not meeting each other in a back room somewhere and coming up with a decision. Our conversations have to be in front of the camera, in front of the community members. This is why we came and met at the last public board meeting. This is why we had a five-hour discussion that too many, maybe they thought it wasn't useful to them information-wise, but was the first time we all met as a board. And the only way we can operate by law is as a full board and a voting body of seven members, and we cannot do this otherwise. That's why we're here again tonight, to have a public conversation. And it might not be useful to everyone to hear these back and forths that we have, but in order for us to be effective in the role that we have as board members, we must meet in public. We must have this conversation in public. We must dialogue with the community, be it staff, be it parents, be it other community members, and we must make the decision in public. And we're required by law to do this every 30 days in regards to what we're going to do moving forward, even if we know we may have another trajectory coming up. This is part of our role and responsibility, and we have to do it as a team. It's not something any individual board member has authority to do. So I just want to make clear to everyone that while we don't intend to waste your time, that is not our intention. We don't want to waste anybody's time, but we need to have this kind of conversation in public, and we have to move forward with the good faith of the community that we are going to entertain everybody's input before we make a final decision. And I just wanted to make that clear to everyone because there seems to be some idea that we may come to conclusions at a time behind the scenes and that we just come here to sit in the chairs and have some airtime, and that's not what we're doing. This is what an open meeting is. So I appreciate you giving me the time.
Well, thank you, Trustee Petrikov, for clarifying that because I've talked to some parents in the community, and they honestly think that maybe two or three of us sit down and we come up with these plans and recommendations. No, we're here to listen to the experts, even though we know there is no perfect plan, but administrations will bring a plan forward that's safe for students, staff, and obviously the community, too. That's what we're here for. No, we don't, we don't get together for lunch and talk about how we're going to do this. We might have phone calls back and forth, hey, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? But at the end of the day, we come here, we sit in front of you, and we listen to the same presentations, and we go from there. So, yeah, thank you.
Trustee Lane is...
Trustee...
Lane.
Trustee Lane, please.
As evidence of that, I would point to the two nurses. Thank you very much for being here. This is not what they want to spend their time doing, I'm sure. They are so swamped with all of the record-keeping, the checking out cases at schools, and they're going to speak for themselves. So if anybody thinks that it's just a small group of board members who are making this decision, absolutely not. We have a couple of public health officials here, our school employees, and we rely heavily on Wayne County and the state of Michigan. So that is just an excuse for people to say that something about what they didn't like that we made a decision. We're making our decision based on their input and all of the input that everyone brings together.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Secretary, we'll go to the next item, please.
Next item is discussion. Item one, extended continuity of learning plan. Dr. Glenn Maleko.
Thank you. So I have a few updates as we move into the plan, and we do have a presentation that is outlined based on board requests and based on information we think that you need. So I'll go to the plan shortly, but I want to make a few updates, and I think it's appropriate that we, we've been doing this since the start of the pandemic, a moment of silence, and, you know, we're aware of more deaths locally in the United States. We're at 225,000 and 7,500-plus in Michigan. And I just want to, you know, impact it today. One of our principals, Arima Hassan, who was supposed to be part of this presentation, a loved one passed away, and so she wasn't able to be here. I talked to her yesterday, and she really felt bad. I said, look, take care of your family. So we know that it's happening out there to the people that are friends, are family, and so I'd like to take a moment of silence in honor of all them and her father. So a few other updates I have. I want to mention we've had the SAT and PSAT testing that's going on. It's from what I've seen in the building so far, and what I've been reported from the team has been successful. We do not have a huge number of students taking it. We are required by the state to offer this to students. Students are not required to come in, but we must offer it. We've checked with the state, and we cannot change the dates. I spoke to President Barry about that. We have to go with the dates. There's no flexibility. The state has confirmed that in emails and in memos, and we did have on the 14th, we have the 27th and the 29th, and Ms. Peterson has the numbers of those tested. Our students, again, it's voluntary. And remember, too, that some of the students that need the SAT for their college admission were not able to take it back in April. So this is also important to them to take those tests, and so that's why the state is having that for the SAT, PSAT. So I just wanted everyone to be aware. And when I went into the building and my team, the staff were doing a great job following all safety protocols as well. In fact, you go in the buildings, you see that, and we're going to present this, but there's taped off areas, there's all directions for how you go through, social distancing. So I was very impressed in how that was handled. Wanted to mention, too, I'm excited that we had a huge response of Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. We had over 160 applicants this year. So we know we can't have 160 on the, on the group, but we will include everyone in some way or another, and I appreciate, appreciate Dr. Swiden for leading the process and Ms. Nadia Musa and Ms. Charles, who's still not available, but we wish her all the best as well. She's been off for a while. And so that, that is moving forward, and I'm excited to engage the students. So that's coming up. I wanted to point that out. You know, this has been difficult for all of us, and I want to give credit to the board, and I want to acknowledge as well what you said, you know, in the pandemic, we've had virtual and other meetings, but the same for me. I can talk to individual board meetings, but we know that we can't make decisions because I have to come here in this open meetings format. The board, to me, you have all been responsible. You've taken excellent leadership. I appreciate from President Barry to President Cavalluna at the college, to all the trustees who are here and those at home, that everyone is taking this extremely serious. We spent a lot of time looking at this, and the amount of data that I give you as board members is tremendous, that our team gives you. So I appreciate your care in that, and it goes to our team, and it goes to our parents and our community. We appreciate all the comments that we get. You know, board members are getting it as well. We're getting differing opinions on should we have in-person. Well, today, you know, again, it's should we be online? Should we stay? There's a lot of opinions out there, and we're taking all those opinions into consideration. But what you'll see again today is that we're also looking at the data, the science, and the individual situations in Dearborn. So I want to commend the entire community. None of us want to be in this situation. This is uncharted waters for all of us. And what I want to say is we need to stick together, stick together as a team, staff, parents, community, students, to get through this. Part of that is the things we can do, like masking up and doing our part. When you see the presentation today, you're going to have an outline of a plan, but we have changed, we have changed it because it's a fluid situation. What have we changed? We've changed the dates. We are not going to recommend a specific date tonight to start because we are going to be looking at the data metrics that the nurses are going to present, and we need at least two weeks of solid, safe data that's coming to consider in-person instruction, to consider reopening the learning lab. So I want to make that known, that when we first started to create this presentation, and even at the last board meeting, we were looking at, we had some dates in mind. Now, we still have dates in mind, but I will say to you, they're tentative pending on the community data. So that's why we're all in this together. We've been very transparent with everything on the dashboard that the nurses are going to show. Anyone can get the data, and we are using that. We are using the data to guide us along with the need for, for our students. So I want everyone to be aware. We take this very seriously, and everyone is putting, I mean, the team, all of you, I mean, there's been no vacations for anyone. Everyone's been working since, really, the summer. It's been, we know a difficult year for all, but again, we started at the beginning of people losing their lives, and that's why we have to balance that. So I also want to say that I've been very excited. Normally, I am doing 400-plus school visits a year, and I can't do that. It wouldn't be the responsible thing to do. I don't want cabinet. I don't want people going all over to protect everyone. Having said that, I am joining students and teachers in the classroom, and I'm not doing it by just popping in. I've been invited. I feel like that's the way to go. I know I've shared this with the board. I've had some very positive interactions. I appreciate the teachers that have invited me in. I'm looking to go into more classes so I get an understanding of the positives and successes and the struggles because I want to understand the things that we need to improve. I want to give our teachers a shout-out. They've really stepped up, and from what I've seen, again, we know everything is not perfect, but they are working very hard, and, and they are in that in virtual environment. And it's very difficult, too, when, you know, you can't, we, you know, we're not allowed to mandate cameras being on because of the rules and the law and the privacy. So it's difficult when you are teaching a lesson and you may not be able to see your student. So teachers are really stepping up. I would say we kind of took our medicine. I'll, I'll use this analogy in the beginning. We knew that it was going to be difficult when we did the soft start, but I think we're better in two months later for having done that and switching our platform, and we're going to continue to get better because of that, those decisions that were made by the committee. So again, I really thank the teachers for their outstanding work. I'm seeing it firsthand, and I also understand the struggles that I'm hearing, and, you know, I hear it from the union and others, but we have this dialogue going on. Along with that, I want to thank our great staff, all staff in the district, my great team, the staff that includes non-instructional, staff all over the district, because it takes everyone. You're going to hear cleaning. You're going to hear other things tonight that are part of the process. I want to thank our parents for their understanding and patience, and then I also want to thank our great students because they're the ones actually that are having the most adversity in this situation, and we all know it. It's really not the same for our students, not just the events, the great, the fun things that they may have, but also their academics. So I thank them for sticking in there, and I thank all the students who have been emailing me. I get a lot of student emails asking questions, and I appreciate that, and I always respond to everybody that communicates, you know, with me. So having said that, I also know that the Board of Education always asks, and we've been giving data on retirements, resignation. So I'm just going to put the data out there in front of us, and I'm going to ask David to pull it up so everyone has it. I know we also have exit surveys that we're doing, but just to show where the, what the data is at. So when we look at full-year teacher turnover data, and David has that up right now, let's see here, you can see that it's generally been consistent. So if we look at the full year, we're looking at 3% resignations, 3%, 3%, 3%, 2%. And the same thing with retirements. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm listing the wrong one. This is the, I'll go back to, this is the full year, dear. I didn't have it listed. Percentage of resignations, 2017, 18, 6%. 18, 19, 5%. 19, 20, 5%. 20, 21, 3%. For retirements, 3% in 17, 18, 18, 19, 2%. And then 19, 20 is 3%. 20, 21, 2%. Now, in fairness, because 20, 21 is only a few months in, and that's where I was just sharing the, the data that goes from July 1 to August 26. So we're looking at percent of resignations. 17, 18 is 3%, 3%, 3%, now 2%. So that is comparing the first several months of the school year on multiple years of data. That way, we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges, so to speak. Retirements, 1% in 17, 18, 18, 19, 0%, 19, 21%, and then 20, 21. So again, that's the four-month data. We also anticipated, and I'm just going to say, you know, we're hearing around, it's difficult for not just staff in the, in the district, but all staff. We're hearing of people that are making decisions, whether that be, you know, they're able to work from home in their businesses, or maybe they're, even the district. Some people are resigning or retiring, not just in the school, but to be closer to family or take advantage of the family. I've received personal letters from staff that have said they're retiring, and in that, they've told me it was a difficult decision, but because of the COVID-19 situation, they have a loved one or a family member or some responsibility that they have that they need to take care of. So I wanted to put the data out there as to what's there. You know, we are a large district with up to 2,700 employees with full and part-time, over 2,500, and I think everyone's kind of struggling with that. Having said that, we also know that we need to support our teachers, and we need to do things to continue to, you know, provide support and encourage them to continue to remain in the district, continue to make improvements in our administration, our team. I know our board wants it. You've been guiding, and we're going to continue to do that. So we respect all our employees. We thank them, and you're going to hear from some of our great employees today. So I can't say enough, I went on a little bit, but I really appreciate all the great work that our teachers and our staff do, and I just did want to put out that dataset. So having said that, we will move on to the actual presentation, and I'm going to call up Dr. Chokol, who will lead. Again, this is a combination of requests from the board with things that we felt we need presented. You will, you will see the plan. You'll see a lot of datasets and the things that are needed. As far as the filtration, Mr. Andrew's going to mention it, President Barry, but we don't, we're not yet ready on the full filtration. We'll have that available at the next board meeting, but it'll be, he'll mention it within the cleaning report. So I'll pull up Dr. Chokol.
Good evening. I'm President Barry, board trustees, Superintendent Maleko. I'm Jill Chokol, executive director, and I'm here to introduce... Several of the team members that are going to be sharing very short, separate presentations on the school reopening plan. There will be a presentation on the COVID-19 data, safety cleaning transportation, learning labs, the K-12 reopening plan, and the virtual learning program. I am also privileged to introduce to you our two great district nurses that have already received a shout-out from Trustee Lane, but who will be facilitating our walk through the COVID-19 data. District Nurse Carrie Khan and District Nurse Amy Candace.
Dr. Maleko, President Barry, and the entire Board of Trustees. My name is Carrie Khan, district school nurse for Dearborn Public Schools, and I am here today along with Nurse Amy Candace, representing the district school nursing team. We are going to go through the COVID-19 data with you all, both the community data as it has been shared with us from the Health Department, as well as walk through with you the data representing how COVID-19 cases in the community have impacted the Dearborn School District. So I'm going to share with you the history of the community data, and then Amy is going to share with you the specific Dearborn Public Schools COVID-19 cases data. First off, I want to, I want you all to know that each week, the Health Department releases a weekly COVID-19 report for Wayne County schools. This reporting period is representing the week prior to the report. So the report is reflecting back Sunday through Saturday of the previous week. This report is compiled at the Health Department level after they receive updated data from the state level, and then it is released to the school districts, and most of the time it's on Tuesdays. Sometimes it's later in the week. For us in Dearborn, the epidemiologist starts, his phone starts blowing up and his emails start blowing up when he hasn't sent it to us. So we usually get it pretty quickly. This is also for public view on the Wayne County Health Department website. So it looks like David has already brought this up, but you can find this on the Wayne County website, and then we link it in from the Dearborn Schools COVID-19 webpage. So we can show you where that's at, if David can show you that. So you click down. So now we're at, on our website, this is our COVID-19 webpage. If you scroll down, let's see if he's, okay, so right here. Weekly Wayne County Report to Schools. When we get that, you click on that, and then there is the PDF. You can get this, this is for public view at Wayne County as well, but we're going to keep it up on our website so that people can see it. So what's up here is last week's, I shouldn't say last week's. This was the report from last week for the dates of, I got it right here. There we go. October 11th to Saturday, October 17th. So that is what this, that they show you the metrics and definition, and they give you the results. So that is where it's located. So next, we put together a chart of the history of all these weekly reports from the Health Department. The first report published from the Health Department was on August the 4th. So now I just want to show you the historical data, and there it is. So in the shaded grayish-blue area is just those, that report I showed you, just kind of broken down into different columns so that you can kind of see the trends. And it's, it's interesting to look back on it because you can see when we were gonna, when school was going to be in session, and we just were not in a good spot there with the positivity rate and what was going on there. And then if you look over at columns G and the next column in the light green, that's just, that's not, that is reports from the county, but that's not reports from this weekly report. At night, I just stay up and wait for Wayne County Commissioner Sam Baydo to post his report, and then write those numbers down, divide them by seven, and then we get the cases per day. So the county, obviously, has much more 24/7 surveillance. So sometimes their numbers and these numbers might not be exact, but they should be fluctuating very, very little. So this is for you guys to have to kind of look over. If we can scroll down a little bit, David. Let's see here. I just wanted to show you where we were starting to really get excited about the community. Oh, scroll back up. At the, even go up a little bit higher. So, you know, we were in the fives. We didn't see, it was a decision not to start learning labs, and then we started coming down. And when we hit that 3.6, I haven't done a cartwheel since high school, but we were really excited about that 3.6. And then if you scroll over to the comments there from the epidemiologist in the green, we were so excited when he sent us the report that we, we asked back to him, when was the last time you saw the positivity rate this low? And he answered back to us, late May, early June, before we reopened. So we were, we were getting excited. First, first week in a while, cases were under 100, and looked like the trend was going in the right direction. And then a couple of weeks go by, and the week, if we could scroll down a little bit more to October's, the week of October 7, yeah, 11 through the 17. So on Tuesday, the 20th, the epidemiologist sent the report over, and when you first looked at it, there is like almost, I think, a 200 increase in all of county, but then that positivity rate, you know, went up, and then hospital rates went up. And at first, you're looking at it, and you're, if you zoom in on that positivity rate, it's not 5%. So we didn't hit 5%. I was a little relieved at that, but then he sent some comments over with the report, and that was a concern to me, and I just want to read those. It looks like David's read them over. So he gave us the positivity rate, but he said, you know, the positivity rate's 4.6, and he says it hasn't hit it yet, but based on this reporting period, it's not trending in the right direction. And he, he not usually says things like that, so I took note of that. And then he wanted to point out that even though the daily rolling average, so they obviously look at trends, they're big on trends, and from the beginning of the week, their rolling average was a seven on that Sunday, and then it increased to a 15.3 by Saturday. So that was a concern for him. And then he said another concern was an increase in beds, that the occupancy, occupant, occupancy rate, both for just beds and ICUs, was over 80%. And he just said, we're going to be monitoring this. And then along with that, we had several, we, between Friday, so that would have been the 15th, and then that Monday. So from a Friday to a Monday, we had several call-ins of positives that had been on school grounds. So going into all that, I just, I was just compelled to let Dr. Maleko know that here's the report. Every week, we get the report. We send it over to the Crisis Team Committee and to the nurses. We all have it. I just felt compelled to tell them, you know, these concerns. So just to give you a little history of that week. And then, okay, so this past week, which would be the dates of, there we go, 10/18 to 10/24. One of the bummer's is we don't get these reports till Tuesdays, at least, if not later, and you guys meet on Mondays. So that's, that's a bummer. But epidemiologists did email us before this meeting, and tomorrow's report, the positivity rate for out Wayne County, it will be 5.4%. So it went up again, I think by about 0.8. And then also, the daily, the average daily tests went up. So that's a good thing. There were more tests drawn or... There were more tests drawn or from the week before, but 5.4% is what it's going to be. One interesting thing I wanted to tell you is, he also sent over the state of Michigan's positivity rate for the same length of time. So, from 10-18 to 10-24, out Wayne County's positivity rate's going to be 5.4. State of Michigan's, 5.4. Last week, positivity rate for Wayne County was 4.6. State of Michigan's was 4.6. So, we're really trending right with the state right now. Does anybody have any questions on any of that?
Can I make a comment, Carrie? I just want to say, appreciate the work you've done, and Amy, and, you know, we've been pretty stable too. We haven't been, we know it's a fluid situation, but we were getting alerts, and we had some conversations with DFT President Maza on, I think it was Thursday night. We had some conversations about some of our buildings on Wednesday. I think I had Ms. Khan on conference call every evening last week, but she called me in the morning, that morning on Tuesday with the concerns, and the week before, we held. We were not going to, we had conversations, and what do I mean by that? We weren't going with just daily rates. We were waiting for the weekly reports to have trends. And so, you know, when she called me, there was obviously concern, and again, the trending data is concerning. So, that's when I did just make the decision to bring in some of our union heads into the 10:30 cabinet meeting, that we would have been holding off till later in the day, till 3 o'clock. But we felt as if, after I got the call, we saw the trending data, there was obviously some concerns with staff, and so I want to let, you know, staff know that, you know, this data comes from the nurses channeled through the health professionals, and we're taking consideration of the health of the community with every decision. We also know that some people will not be happy with the decisions, but we have to stick up, and I stand by the decision. I stand by getting, you know, any criticism. I also stand by the fact that we made decisions to keep some flexibility within that, because we know that certain students, for example, special ed and others that may, you know, need some in-person instruction. Now, having said that, I want to say, well, why, well, why do you have certain students in there? Well, we've already reduced the number of people going in the building. So, it was all voluntary, though. No one was forced, and, you know, we kind of stick by that decision as well. And so, we discussed it for quite a while. So, I wanted to say, it's been very thoughtful, and honestly, we are so lucky to have these two great nurses with the connections that they have to directly to the county officials. And I'm also on direct meetings. You mentioned Sam Baydoon. I'm on a meeting there, and I'm also on meetings every week with all the superintendents from across, not only the county, but some across the state, and we're getting these red alert flags from these locations, saying that we're concerned with the data. Again, I want in-person instruction. I want everyone to know. I really do. I know it's best, but we're just looking at the balance, and we can't get the, we've got to have some consistency. So, again, I'm going to go back to everyone in the community to help. So, I wanted to add that, and I appreciate Carrie and her professionalism.
The way we're going to handle tonight's meeting is after each presenter, we'll go ahead and ask questions. We don't want to interrupt the presenters, and we don't want to wait to the end of the meeting to ask questions. So, we'll go ahead and start. Are there any questions for the nurses? We'll start with Trustee Petchikoff.
Yeah, I just want to make sure so that the community knows how to digest this information, because there's a lot of graphs, a lot of charts. I've gone to the Dearborn's dashboard page, and a lot of things that people might not be comfortable with reading all the time of what it really means when we're making the decision and what we're using. Are we weighting one piece of data heavier than another? Say, we've got the Wayne County positivity rate, which my assumption is diluted because of the surrounding area cases are less than what Dearborn has been experiencing on certain weeks. Are we weighting that as less than the seven-day average of positive cases for Dearborn? What numbers are we really using, and how can we clarify for our community members when they're looking at this information? They need to really have something that they can hone in on, not have to go through all of this data, because they're not experienced at looking at it, neither are we, or at least I am not, to the point where I can say, okay, that's the number where I say we have a problem. So, what are we using, and how can we clarify that when people are looking at the dashboard where they're picking up, they're poking for Wayne County's information, they're poking for Dearborn's information? There's a lot of confusion, I believe.
Well, I could add in a period, oh, go ahead.
Yep, yeah. I think we've got good news for you tonight, Trustee Petchikoff, because that's the next section I'm going to go over. Wayne County is now going to be giving you all a dashboard. It's either going to be weekly or bi-weekly, where they take three, I'll just explain it now. They take three indicators. One of them is from the county, which is that positivity rate, which is, that's a significant number. And they're going to take two indicators from Dearborn. One of them is a four-week trend up and down, and then the other one, I'm losing my indicator. Oh, average number of cases per day. And they're going to give you a weighted factor, and we'll talk about that soon, but that, that's going to be directly from Wayne County, where they've taken, they're the experts. They've taken indicators, and then they're going to give you a determination level.
Okay, that's what I've really been waiting for to see.
This is, yes, we have all been long awaiting for this. Every week, we've been, yeah, go ahead, Dr. Malako.
So, I just want to add too, because of the legislation. So, the state law does say, just so everyone's aware and clear, and it came, there was a matrix that the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services had to come up with, and the law that was passed at the end of August says that we have to take the, we have, the health departments have to provide recommendations to the districts. It still is ultimately up to the Board of Education with the administration to make the final decision, but we have to look at that data, and they have to provide it per state law. So.
Great, thank you. Trustee Moser.
Yeah, I'd like to also add that we cannot thank our heroes, the nurses, enough for what they've done since the start of the pandemic. My question is regarding Dearborn data. Are we, are we putting that on the same Excel sheet as well, so we can compare Wayne County's to Dearborn? Because last time, we did not have that in the meeting. So, do we have that tonight?
Uh, yeah, there's a two shaded, the shaded green area would be more of the Dearborn data. Oh, it's all kind of off to the side.
The total confirmed cases in the city and the seven-day average you're talking about, right?
Yeah.
But are we able to get a positivity rate for the city?
No. There's no statistic, they, you cannot get a positivity rate for the city. There's no metric that, and part of it is because, and this comes from, you know, top health officials, it's because they're taking the county, because the testing is all over the county, and I think we may have mentioned before, and part of it is because anybody can go to any testing center, so they will not provide a positivity level for a local community. They provide the infection rates, and so that's what we have to look at, but there is no positivity rate. So, if someone says we have a positivity rate, they're just doing their own math on their own and coming up with an average.
Because we really don't know how many people from Dearborn have gone out and gotten tested, because it's, they go to a variety of testing sites. That's what the, what the reason is behind it?
And I've been in so many meeting, and I mean, they can speak to, I've been in so many meetings with the, you know, we're all becoming more experts in these areas. I've been in so many meetings with different health officials, and again, I can't tell you how many at the county, at the state, and it's the same thing. This is the consist, so I think, I think David tried to put out a communication at one point explaining, but there is no metric called positivity community. It's only county, and that's why you have to use it as one of the, but then that's why you look at the infection rates in the district, well, I'm, in the city. And then you, you will be looking also at the rates in the schools too, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, the county, the county only receives reports of those people that are positive. And then they'll get a tabulation of all the tests, all the labs in Wayne County. So, you've got, you've got all the, you have all the tests, but you only have the positives. So, that's why you can't come up with a Dearborn positivity.
Of how many people were, yeah, walked through.
On Carrie, on your slide, you had, look, there was, if we go back two, because then again, the data is delayed. Two weeks before, it was seven per day infection, it went up to 15.3, so that gives you an indication of the average per week of the infection rates that occurred. Now, because it's going up in the county, I imagine that's going to be higher this week with the infection rate in the community, I would think, from Dearborn.
Are there any other questions? Nurse Carrie and Nurse Amy, of course, yes, we are thankful for the work you're doing. I'm going to take it a step further. Every time I talk to Dr. Malako, either one of your names or both of your names come up. So, the work you have been doing with the team, with the administration's team is just remarkable. Yes, we are thankful, but I'm going to take it a step further and say that your guidance, give you some feedback, there's no doubt in my mind, I've cut down on illness in our community and possibly, you know, avoided deaths in our community. So, the work that you do, I know you're working seven days a week. I know that, because I'm talking to Dr. Malako on Sunday, and he just got off the phone with you. So, yeah, thank you very much. Carrie, the 5.5% is not surprising to me, because I actually go, the 5% positivity rate for the current week or the week that has passed, because I actually go on the state website and get the raw data, the daily raw data, and I was seeing numbers like 5.6, 6.04, 5.78. The only thing they didn't have was obviously Saturday and Sunday, which probably the county has now, and they're probably going to get those numbers out to us. So, I know, we talked about that 5% mark. I know Trustee Thorpe said we need to make a decision. Are we going to make decisions that, hey, if it gets down to the threes or the fours, is it below five? To me, and I'm sure, I've had discussions with my colleagues, to us, it's the community, the community behavior. So, we can't stress it enough that, yes, you have to wear your masks when you're on public. Yes, when you're in restaurants or what have you, follow the, follow the orders. Saturday morning, I was at a restaurant real early, real early. It was a restaurant with my daughter. We got together for breakfast. I get there early, because everybody else is sleeping. But I got up to wash, go to the washroom, washed my hands. I came back with my mask on, and there was four people sitting at a table looking at me like I just came out of Marge or something, because I had the mask on. Yeah, those are the people that are getting us in trouble in this community. There's, we want to get our students back into the classrooms, and until we change the community behavior, and I'm talking about the Dearborn community behavior, because this is where we have our pulse on. We can look at graphs. If anybody tells you they're an expert on the graphs and the numbers, stuff like that, guess what? Yeah, yeah, we're going to trust the experts, you know, nurses, Wayne County Health Department. We're going to listen to them when it comes to that. So, we're going to try to understand it, and that seems, the positivity rate seems to be, for me at least, it's working. That's telling me, and the misconception out there is that the more people you test, the higher that number's going to go. We just had a discussion. That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true. That's the positivity rate. So, if you test currently in Wayne County, about 3,000 students, there's 3,000 people getting tested. So, if you test 1,000 people or test 10,000 people during that, you know, during that week, you should come up with the, close to the same positivity rate. That's the way I understand it. So, that's not a bad number to look at. But Trustee Moser, yeah, I'm looking forward to some information, you know, directly from our city.
Trustee McDonald has a question.
Trustee McDonald, please.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the nurses, this is basic information, but I know there's a lot of confusion out there in the community. So, can you speak to real diff, uh, real quickly, the difference between isolation and quarantine?
Sure. So, that is a big difference. Self-quarantine is when you have become a close contact, when you've been exposed to COVID-19, then you are going to be instructed to self-quarantine, and that is a 14-day period from when you were exposed, because what they're doing is they're trying, they're removing you from the society, you know, from people to watch to see if you develop symptoms, if you've become symptomatic and actually do have the virus. So, that is 14 days. Self-isolate is when you have tested positive, symptoms of it, but you tested positive and, you know, symptomatic, from there, you go 10 days out, because that is the full time of that you are contagious. So, that's the difference.
Thank you. I know that there's been some confusion.
Sure, and I know Trustee Dr. Mead asked last, last meeting about the occupancy, beds. I don't know if you noticed that, you said it was over 80%.
Let me, let me give you a quote from the epidemiologist about the hospital beds. They're not strained right now. They're, but the, but their occupancy is up, and this is how our epidemiologist explained it to us. They don't have a threshold of where they want the hospitals to be. Obviously, most hospitals and ERs will operate close to or near capacity on a normal day without COVID-19. Of course, you know, more people in beds, you know, more people are working, and they can take care of the people, and, you know, it's a business. They want it to be full. They can, they can work all the way up to almost full capacity. But this is where that metric becomes concerning, because if we have a positivity rate that is above 5%, and our inpatient and ICU occupancies are reaching 90 to 95%, then will we have the hospital capacity to care for the spike in COVID-19 cases? So, I hope that's helpful. It was helpful to me when he sent that over.
Yes, thank you. Any more questions?
No, but I, I just want to add to that about the bed, because that doesn't impact just people who have COVID. That then impacts, that's a domino effect for the people who are going in there with a heart attack or with some other illness, that they need to have ICU care as well. And if it, if the beds are occupied by COVID patients, then people with other illnesses are going to suffer potentially not having the care that they need. So, it's not just about COVID at that point.
Yeah.
Trustee Thorpe?
It was mentioned that the positivity rate and what we look for in the positivity rate, and if there were more tests and you had the same positivity rate, that would be okay. But that would also mean that there is a chance that the number of confirmed cases in Dearborn and then the seven-day average would both move higher. So, it's a question of what number does a person want to look at? The positivity rate could still be the same, but if we're testing two or three times as many people, you have to assume the number of cases in Dearborn is going up.
And we really don't know how, we're not going to be able to have that information of how many people from Dearborn out of, out of the Wayne County population is being tested compared to the other communities. That's, that's the issue.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for the report.
We have two more important metrics to look at from our nurses.
Yeah, yep. So, I do want to say real quickly, I have to shout out to Bethany and Callie and Ola. There are other three partners, and they work just as hard, and we couldn't do it without them.